To call the June 22 regular scheduled board meeting to order. Kathy and Tammy, please let the record state that all board members are in attendance. Our first agenda item is the pledge and our honoring excellence items and Mr. Stephen Hall will take over at this point.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're pleased to introduce special guests to lead us in our pledge of allegiance this evening. We are joined tonight by Tate and Ellie Andrews. Tate and Ellie, would you come forward, please? Right up here. So Tate and Ellie are participating in Explore this summer by taking artworks classes at Cowden Elementary. Tate is a former Cowden student who is now a sixth grader at Pershing. Ellie is a fourth grader at Cowden Elementary. These two students are amazing leaders both during the regular school year and during our summer art program. And I have a few notes from Dr. Cherie Norman, their principal. Dr. Norman says that Ellie's smile is contagious. Can you let the board see your smile? She has a love of learning. She's positive upbeat and she loves to help answer questions in her classroom. An interesting fact about Tate, I have one about Tate as well, is that he's an amazing dancer and Dr. Norman said he has a special talent for the moonwalk.
Uh-oh. Can you see it?
I can see it.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. No carpet.
That's awesome.
So Dr. Norman and others are with us tonight to support Tate and Ellie. If you're here, would you please stand for recognition as well as your family? So now we ask those who are able to please stand and join us as Tate and Ellie lead the pledge of allegiance. And whenever you're ready to begin, please do.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see that one more time.
We'll give a photo here.
Subsequent speakers must do the movement.
That's right, that's right. Let me see that one more time. Yeah, you got it tonight. Sorry, Charles. All speakers must do the movement. That's right, that's what Charles just said. Yay, awesome.
We'll continue with honoring excellence this evening and tonight we have the privilege of recognizing one of our own Board of Education members. Dr. Alina Leonard has achieved two certifications through the Missouri School Boards Association. She recently was honored for achieving both master board member certification and distinguished board member certification. And to put that into context, as you all know, there's an initial requirements for all board members to complete certification and training through MSBA. After that initial training, there's also advanced training. And then beyond advanced training, there is the master and distinguished levels of certification. And we were able to receive confirmation from MSBA that Dr. Leonard is the only board member in SPS history to complete both the master and distinguished level of certification. To earn those certifications, Dr. Leonard completed additional training. This work included both observing board meetings in other school districts, leading presentations, attending regional and statewide events, and various reading and writing assignments. We appreciate her commitment to ongoing professional development and leadership training, which contribute to the effectiveness of our Board of Education. Once again, please join us in congratulating Dr. Leonard. And I know that Ms. Luton has certificates from MSBA.
You'll go around and get your pictures.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Thank you.
Dr. Leonard, would you like to share anything more about your experience?
I would just say that, as you all know, I know you are all committed to ongoing board education, each and every one of you. And so it's an honor to serve along with you. It's an honor to learn, continue to learn and to serve along with you all. And I would just encourage you all to continue your MSBA trainings and as the stronger we are individually, the stronger we are collectively. So thank you very much.
We'll conclude our honoring excellence this evening by recognizing our final building up honoree of the school year. With Explore fully underway, it is especially appropriate that our honoree tonight teaches an Explore launch class. This video will share the story of Mrs. Alisa Izell, who is teaching a virtual Iron Chef class for middle school students. And this is her building up story.
I'm Alisa Izell. I'm a special education teacher at Kikaboo High School and I'm a launch educator for Iron Chef. The class was born from student input. The students told us that they were at home by themselves all summer and they were tired of eating sandwiches and they really wished that they knew some other ways to make food for themselves that wasn't just the same old boring thing.
Alisa is an outstanding example of building up, very approachable. She's very kind, very accessible, and I think that's really important during the summer, especially for an online course. She also has been willing to step in anytime there's a gap to fill. For example, this year she was more than willing to actually pack the chef kits that students get to take home, which is a very long and tedious task. And she has happily picked that up for us this summer.
I've been teaching Iron Chef for lunch in the summer for about six years. I believe this might be the seventh.
For the past couple of years now, it's had to be completely virtual, but she has ensured that there are still opportunities through Zoom for professional chefs to talk to students and to provide demonstrations. How food is produced, how food is shipped, how it ends up on shelves in our grocery stores, nutrition facts. So she has just worked to make sure that students get a really comprehensive education in that course.
I've always been passionate about food and how food affects your body and how it makes us feel. I have a background in fitness, exercise, and health science, so it was always something that I enjoyed doing and sharing with my students. My favorite thing about teaching this class is being able to see the students put everything they learn into action. So when they are done going through the unit, they will actually make a video of themselves preparing those recipes and submit it to me. So that's really rewarding to get to see them apply all that knowledge that they've just gained.
Iron Chef is offered both in June and July to sixth through eighth grade students and we still have openings for the July session. So I would tell parents that I think it's a really great opportunity for their students to learn a life skill, an important skill, and do it from the comfort of their home in July.
Mrs. Izell, would you please come forward and Dr. Leonard will present you with your building up recognition. I'll get a photo of the two of you.
Well, I just want to say it's an honor to be recognized for something that doesn't feel like work. It's, you know, I feel very fortunate to be able to have the opportunity to be a force for good in the community and being able to understand the students and families that we serve and the coworkers that I work with doesn't feel like doing anything extra. It just feels like an opportunity to be that force for good in the world. So thank you for allowing me that.
And that concludes honoring excellence for this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? So move. I've got Chirida with the first, Charles with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Okay. Logging back on. Okay. Did you, you'll just take a verbal for Danielle?
Yay.
Okay.
Get logged off.
I got it. I'm here. But it's not bringing it up.
We're gonna have Bruce. We're gonna have Bruce check. Do we have everyone's vote?
Yes.
Okay, and is all the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Our next agenda item is public comments to address agenda items. I'll read our statement. The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about issues being discussed. It is recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It is inappropriate to address board members about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. If you have materials that you would like to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary prior to speaking and she will distribute them to board members. We have three public speakers for agenda items tonight. Our first public speaker is Kendall Qualls, speaking on the subject of budget development, 10.06. Good evening, Mr. Qualls.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Yes, thank you. Is there a mic? Can I have your piece of?
It will automatically pick up.
All right, great.
There is a mic picking you up.
Okay, great. Well, let me introduce myself. My name is Kendall Qualls and what I'm speaking on is the public funding or the funding of the budget for the diversity piece, which I'm very concerned about. And I say this, it's important that I give background. So I'm descended of American black slaves. My father and my mother were both from the South. I actually, they divorced when I was one years old. So I actually had to go to public school in Harlem, New York in the late 1960s. I went there for three years, then my father came and picked me up and my younger brother to go to public school with him in Oklahoma. Again, public schools. As a result of that, I just had in earnest have a different type of life. I actually got my pub, you know, again, through public schools, paid my way through college, a small state school in Oklahoma, served in the Army for five years as an Army officer here in the United States, as well as in South Korea, right on the DMZ. So I got a chance to see what freedom means with one ethnic group divided by a line of freedom, North and South Koreans. I went back and got another, got a master's degree from University of Oklahoma, another master's degree from Oklahoma City University in Economics, and an MBA from the University of Michigan, a top 10 business school. What concerns me greatly is the critical race theory and the diversity initiatives may be well intentioned, having the opposite results, especially with our young people. When you look at all the published data, you look at the disparities, the racial disparities, peeling back that onion one more layer, it is not white privilege that we need to be concerned about in our country and locally. It's actually two-parent privilege. We've gone, in the black community, we've gone from 80% two-parent, in my lifetime, 80% two-parent families in the black community to 80% fatherless homes without one national initiative to reverse the trend. All the data shows that even kids, young black kids with two parents, have low incidence of expulsion from school, that graduate high school has the same levels as the general population from the distribution curve. We're barking up the wrong tree with this. We're actually penalizing and making other ethnic groups feel bad about their circumstances only because many of them are in two-parent families. The issues that I believe that we really need to focus on is not that we can magically recreate families for these kids, it is how do we make sure that we're addressing the root problem, root causes of these issues in school? We address the right problems and we're not necessarily telling these kids that they can't achieve anything because, you know, they're from a certain ethnic group or because of their skin color. Now, for a kid like me to come from my circumstances and have a career in the healthcare industry, leading a billion dollar brand, jobs on jobs, working in a home office, and then later with Medtronic, this stuff only happens in America. I say this not because of my career success and what I did on my own. People that helped me along the way, black and white, rich and poor, male and female. Americans help people and they see them trying to better their lot in life. This narrative of this systemic racism, don't take an outlier and have that person be the narrative for our country. That's not the narrative. There are all those people out there, but the vast majority of Americans, those Americans stand true and do the extra thing to help people on the way. Now, I stand here with you, again, it's just my personal background. I've been married for 35 years. We've raised five children. We adopted one of them, I can't remember which one, because I love them all the same. It's important that we understand that we have an issue in this country if we really care about these kids. Skin color is not that issue. Unless we address this as a community, as a country, we're going to fail them and we're going to hurt the very foundation of our country. I'm launching a national initiative within the black community to address this, the fatherless, with fathers from the black community, start a movement locally and then moving nationally. Thank you for your time and I wish you the best. And again, you guys have such an important job. Remember that the people behind us here, the ultimate customers, along with their children.
Thank you, Mr. Qualls. We appreciate hearing your personal story and your passion for students. I've also seen your website as well, so thank you. Our next public speaker is Nancy Ellen Smithson, who is speaking on the topic of budget slash textbook. You go by Nancy Ellen. Bye. Okay, I just want to make sure. Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good to see you all. I wasn't able to go to the last meeting, but I was at the previous meeting in actually Venta. Anyway, I am an educator. I taught in Springfield School System, science, Marshfield. I taught chemistry and biology, so I'm well-educated in the scientific method. And so on the agenda, money that's being spent for Chromebooks, and as I understand it, the textbooks have been removed from most of the schools. I have a concern about that because I don't know if you're aware of this and I don't know if, how the process came about to choose the Chromebooks over the textbooks, but we as parents and grandparents, grandparents now, there's a problem with the EMF radiation for kids to be on Chromebooks seven hours a day. That's a real problem. It causes some problems. You might want to do some research on that. I've done a little extended on it, but I won't go into that. So I don't really understand how you can teach chemistry and biology and have lab experiments without having books. So I am old school on that. I have two sons that went to school at Parkview. They love school. One went on to get his master's in art. The other one decided for trade school and they're both very successful businessmen, one here and one in Kansas City. And so I don't report to say that college is the only thing, but I do say that our kids need the opportunity to learn trade things and the other as well, the science, the reading and writing arithmetic. I'm watching my time this time. And I have had a concern about the CRT and if that continues, there's probably going to be a lot more parents who pull their kids out and that's a real concern, especially with HB 349. They will be able to do that. I have done all three. I've done homeschooling, I've done private school, and I've done public school. And I would have to say that in the elementary, homeschooling is the best because you have that connection with the family. And I have noticed that home schooled children have a better communication with adults than students in a public school. So there's something lost there in a public school. And then private school, of course, you've got more of a connection with the teachers. There is also connectacademy.com, that's a tuition-free online service, because not everybody can homeschool their children. Not everybody can afford public or private school. And so that, those are the three alternatives I see for people that are not satisfied. And so if there can be changes made in the policies that have been implemented with regard to the diversity training, and certainly, I of all people have a love for people that are different from me. I don't care if it's their skin color or where they're from. I've worked with people from all over the world at the University of Missouri. I absolutely love them. I have 46 minutes. Second. Wouldn't be lucky with that. So anyway, I think it's, I think it's very, very important for you guys to recognize the oath you took to the United States Constitution, that CRT is not in keeping with our values in the United States Constitution. And then also Carl Heard brought up about the audit that was done in 2012 by request of a petition. And I'm in agreement with that, I think, with a change to a new superintendent. That would be a wise thing to do. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy Ellen. Thank you. Our next public speaker is Pat Scott. Her agenda item is budget training. Good evening, Pat.
Good evening. It's probably my old ears that just can't hear very well back there. I don't know if, I know when you're watching online, you can hear this, but I don't know if it's hard for you all to hear back there. All right. I know I've been told before that by different board members that you have one employee and that's the superintendent that you supervise. But when we have a school system of $350 million or excess out of a budget, I have some concerns. And I know it appears to me that a lot of things have to be secretive. Maybe they do. I don't think it should be with regard to public education. I understand you don't want to be here till midnight, so you're cutting, you know, you don't want to have a question and answer period. I understand that. One of the things that I'm thinking about, and I have thought about for a long time, is our tax dollars, how they're spent. If I look at a piece of property that's got a $2,000 tax bill, $1,800 goes to the school system. $350 million budget is a big budget. I think our school system, I'm not sure it operates as efficiently as it should. I'd like to know that. And I'm in the process of trying to gather some information, which I hope you already have. If you don't, as a supervisor for superintendent, a $300,000 plus, plus ever how many assistants we have, I like to see some organizational charts. For example, if we're talking about changes in curriculum, building services, if we're talking about high school curriculum, high school operations, middle school operations, elementary operations, we have folks in every one of those positions. I've seen them get up here and speak. The staff training, I don't know what you call all of these people. Are they directors? Is there a director of curriculum? Is there a director of the elementary education? I think that's what they're called, but they have numerous people working under them. I'd like to see an organizational chart. The person that's in charge of curriculum, are they in charge of curriculum for the entire district? And do they have subdirect, how many people do they have under them, reports to them? If the middle school, and I'm not, I'm not talking about anyone particular, how are those jobs divided up? Who decided on the staff training? Did that come from the curriculum department? Did that come from the elementary, the level for elementary education and training? Did you decide? Did the superintendent decide? Or did someone under these directors decide? $350 million budget is a lot of money. And I, as a taxpayer, would like to see an organizational chart. I'd like to see if there was one person in charge of curriculum. If I were that person, I wouldn't want to be in charge of first grade, the second grade, and pre-K, and they have somebody under them doing it. How many people do they have under them? Are we talking about a 12% administrative costs? Are we talking about a 20% administrative costs? As we look at a new superintendent and new operations, I think the public needs to be able to look at the accounting of what's going. I'm not saying there is anything. And then there's the launch program. My goodness, that's a world in itself. I would like to see more public information come to me as a taxpayer. I'm interested. Maybe some people are not, but I think people are getting more interested. And if you haven't seen, and I, you haven't seen an organizational chart for this district, it shows how many assistant superintendents we have, how many directors, how many assistants, how many people do we have working in elementary education, the office level? Do we have 25 or 30? How many do we have? I'm just asking you. If you don't know, I elected board members to find out those kinds of things and make sure that they are directing the people properly. That's a business. We're in the business of educating kids and you know that I'm interested in education. But this budget is something else and you're, I believe the Board's responsible for that. I'm not sure. I think so. In a roundabout way, whether it's supervising the superintendent or saying, here's what we need to do. That's a suggestion. I hope we can see that come to reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. That concludes our public speakers on agenda items. Our next agenda item are our consent agenda items. The recommended action is that the Board approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 5.01. Would somebody like to make that motion?
So move.
Charles with the motion. Is there a second? Scott with the second. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item is information reports. There are no information reports tonight, so we will move to our next agenda item, which is our treasures report, which brings Carol Embry up to the podium. Good evening, Carol.
Good evening. Apparently, this is my last treasures report.
That appears to be.
Of my career, so.
Of your career.
It's a very odd space to be in, but again, there's a fantastic team of leaders and individuals who make it all happen, so I know that the transition to Dr. Malthard will go very smoothly. So this evening, we have posted for you our normal reports and my highlights include that based on revised budget, so this is a unique conversation for this evening. Keep in mind that this information represents the best that we have. The time that the treasures report data was produced, that does not end the fiscal year. So we know that as we continue to journey toward June 30, there can still be expenditures and revenues occur. So at the point in time at which these reports were generated, we were anticipated based, anticipating based on the revised budget, an 18.11 ending fund balance percentage. And that compares to May, May was 18.49%. A slight change, that's not unusual. We've continued to true up information. The budget amendment and transfer report that's provided for you shows no overall impact to revenue. There is a transfer between local and federal, and that's all connected to the nutrition services area because of the free lunches that were provided for students and their families this year. On the expenditure side, we do have a recommendation for an increase of $1,008,445, and that is primarily between launch expenditures and also amazingly, our substitute costs. So just kind of truing up the budget in the current year. So again, that still ends, has us ending with an 18.11% for our ending fund balance percentage, but as is customary, we will see that grow because we know that there are expenditures budgeted that will not come to fruition by June 30. Revenue's pretty tight, but the expenditures will not be all experienced. So we'll see that grow. I believe the other information to highlight is the financial audit is scheduled for field work in October and the final audit recommendation, of course, will come forward for the December meeting. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions for Carol about the treasures report at this time before I read the recommended action. Okay? Okay. Our recommended action, thank you, Carol. Our recommended action is that the board approve the treasures report as presented. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I will.
Denise will make the motion. I saw Danielle's hand. We'll second it. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item is board policy, and there are no board policies for tonight. That takes us to new business. Our next agenda item is the election of a new board treasurer. As you all know, Ms. Carol Embry, as you'll see in the notation, is retiring at the end of this month, as she just mentioned, and Dr. John Mulford will assume the position of deputy superintendent of operations effective July 1. The recommended action is that the board appoints Dr. John Mulford as treasurer of the board of the school district of Springfield R12 effective July 1, 2021. Would somebody want to make that motion?
No move.
Sharita will make that motion. Is there a second?
Right.
Charles will second it. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item is the election of board secretary. We have another retirement with Ms. Kathy Luton. This is her last night with us as our board secretary, which leads us to Ms. Tammy Harrington sitting next to her tonight as she's been in training the last month. And she will be moving into her new role effective July 1. The recommended action is that the board appoint Tammy Harrington as secretary of the board for the school district of Springfield R12 effective July 1, 2021. Denise would like to make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Scott will second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item starts our unfinished business. The first three items here, we have already received those presentations during the study session, so that our, our next agenda item is the nutritional services bid. The recommended action is that the board approve the nutrition service bid for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? Danielle will make that motion. Is there a second? Charles will second it. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item is professional learning plan. We received that presentation at the last board meeting. The recommended action is that the board approve the 2021-22 professional learning plan as presented. Somebody willing to make that motion? Charles will make that motion. Maryam will second that. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item is major instructional goals. The recommended action is that the board approve the family and consumer science project Lead the Way and Technology Education MiGs as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? Charles will make the motion. Is there a second? Denise will second it. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item, before and after school expansion, we heard parts of that presentation that was built into Carol Embry's presentation during our semi-session. However, we have some updates from a couple new speakers who are joining us tonight, and Dr. Nicole Holt will introduce those speakers. Good evening, Dr. Holt.
Do you have that pulled up? Thank you. So Dr. Leonard already reminded you that as part of the June 8 budget presentation, Ms. Embry already provided you just a tidbit of information related to before and after school care and the utilization of ESER funds to support students in that way. So tonight, Dr. Mike Mathvin and Dr. Sheila Nguyen will give you a broader picture of our hopes for extension utilizing those funds, so please welcome them.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. And could you remind, since we have new board members, and also remind us also the role you play here?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. My name is Mike Mathvin. I am the director of elementary learning, and I work underneath Dr. Jay Anderson, the executive director of elementary learning, and get a chance to work with our 35 elementary principals and help to lead the learning that's taking place at our elementary schools. So excited today to get a chance to visit with you about the work that Dr. Sheila Nguyen and I, my counterpart with secondary learning, have been working on around expansion of our before and after school care services. And so I will go ahead and jump right in. As you know, as of March 2020, things changed for us significantly, and, and we, as of March 2020, our K8 students had missed over 90 days of instruction at this point in the year. And obviously, that came with some outcomes around learning loss, and we're excited to get students back seated and have some normalcy returning. But with that, we have been given an opportunity with some ESER II coronavirus relief funds to help tackle some of the challenges that have been put in front of us. And so Dr. Nguyen and I have been working with our community partners around how we can utilize our before and after school care programming, help tackle some of the things that we've been seeing with that learning loss. And so looking, as we look at the problem issue that we were tackling, kind of some backstory on, on where we landed, how we got here, obviously, again, the 90 days laid out in regards to having learning loss. If you look at our mid-year data in comparison to our mid-year data of the previous year, unfortunately, we saw declines across almost all subgroups. And obviously, we attribute that to many factors, and seated time, loss of seated time being a primary factor. Feedback that we got from schools, as we started down this road of looking at how we can utilize our partnerships with the before and after school care, the feedback we got from our school leaders was really around three themes. We wanted to hear from them around what we could, what their concerns were. And first and foremost, obviously, learning loss is at the top of that list, combined with attendance issues that came from the pandemic. Second piece was how can we incorporate additional learning opportunities outside of the regular school day? You know, we have them for seven hours, and obviously, if we can offer expanded learning opportunities, exposure to curricul, to grade level content and learning supports outside of the regular school day, that would be beneficial. And the third piece was the impact of access to childcare on attendance during the actual regular school day, and how having a place where parents knew that their child could go after school would increase our regular school attendance. So those three things kind of drove some of the, our initial discussions, which led us to four goals after meeting with our, with our partners. And those four goals focused around, one, how do we embed additional learning opportunities into our before and after school care across the board? So we have a systemic approach to making sure that students have access to this. A second goal was how do we remove barriers so that our most under-resourced students have access to this? And the third piece is how do we support our families and our communities with quality of before and after school care? And then the final piece was how do we work with our current partners in a way that honors their mission and helps to expand the reach to find and implement a consistent solution? So why do we target before and after school care as a place to utilize some of these ESER II funds? Now, first and foremost, obviously, our, our opportunity to extend learning beyond the school day kind of rises to the top. We have a great system in place already and supports there and partnerships with our, with our current community partners. And we saw an opportunity to utilize that system to help make this available. Second piece was the safety issue and giving families a place where they knew that when they sent their kids to school, they have a place for after school childcare that's safe, that is with caring adults, and gives parents an opportunity to continue to seek employment and to go to work as well beyond the school day. The third piece centered around mental health, and obviously, we know the impact that the pandemic has had on mental health across our community, but this gives students and children an opportunity to connect with people that are trained in mentoring and helping students to build healthy relationships. And the final piece focuses around the hunger piece and making sure that students are, have opportunities to have healthy meals and snacks outside of the, of the school day as well. So we're blessed to have an amazing group of partners within our community, and I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Sheila Nguyen to kind of talk through some of the discussions that took place as we came up with a solution, and we'll hand it over to me.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
This was our good transition slide.
Together.
Together, that's right. And this really, Mike, Dr. Mathvin kind of alluded to our partners. Really was a nice opportunity to collaborate and go very deep with Boys and Girls Clubs of Springfield, the Y, the YMCA, our Spark organization, and the Springfield Dream Center. I'd also like to introduce Ms. Brandy Harris, the chief executive officer of Boys and Girls Club of Springfield. She's with us tonight in support of the partner perspective. So she's been along with us for our task and really been an important part of our collaborative team.
And importantly, she is the reigning captain of Springfield.
That's exactly right. And she was addressed this evening as captain.
Did she wear her cape to your meeting? That's what we need to know.
That's a great idea, and we're, we're still meeting.
Moving forward may be a good idea.
That's right. We're still working on that. I think that's a great idea. Our timeline, so we started initially in March, and that was just defining, defining our, our problem. Oh, got your mic? Perfect. So our initial session was in March, defining the problem. As we moved into April, we really concentrated on collaborating with our partners, getting their feedback, gathering lots of feedback from our partners and sites, outlining, really looking and exploring possible solutions. Leading us into May, really establishing the consensus that was consistent for our solutions. What, how are, how are we going to be solving this problem or working on this problem? Moving into June and July, where we are currently, really finalizing details. Our partners are very excited to start hiring and marketing and registering students for the initiative. And moving into August, really implementing the new academic framework across all wraparound So going into detail with solutions, looking at consistent academic time. That time would be incorporated into the daily schedule at each wraparound site with students getting the opportunity for exposure to grade level learning targets and to our standards. Using our resources, our partners would be using our district-approved curricular resources, aligning with our curriculum. Academic staff, looking at hiring, having the partners hire additional academic support staff that are dedicated to implementing the learning activities that are targeted towards students' performance who are below grade level. So the total staff allocation, which Dr. Mathvin's going to go over in just a second, is based upon enrollment at each site. And then really focusing on the scholarship piece. So our goal is for that free and reduced student to attend, to receive services. Students that qualify for free and reduced, that may meet the academic criteria, may receive the scholarship to participate.
All right, this leads us into some of the variables that impact the budgetary numbers. And as Dr. Nguyen mentioned, you know, the, it starts and ends with our target goal of growing the number of free and reduced lunch students that are accessing this, this programming. And what we, our target number is to grow that, the numbers from 1920, which was our last typical number to be able to look at, grow those numbers by 75%. That's our goal. Obviously, that's an aggressive number, and, but, but that's certainly, we want to impact our, our families and students that are in most need and make sure that they have the opportunity to, to access this. So 75% is the, the target growth number. And then when we look at the cost numbers, a 10, there's a $10,000 allocation per academic staff member, and that is based upon the number of projected students that would, that would be attending for each site. And so that, the number of staff members is dependent upon, again, those projected numbers, and it would, it would grow, if you have 0 to 50 students, you have one academic staff member, 50 to 100, we have two, and so on, with a max of four. And then also, there is a per pupil allocation for supplies to make sure that each site has the supplies that they need in order to purchase the academic resources that Dr. Nguyen mentioned. There's a $30 per student allocation, and then the scholarship costs, and then connecting to that 75% growth target is a $1,000 per student scholarship cost incorporated as well. When we look at the number of students that, that we would target to impact, the, on the left column, you'll see the actual numbers from 1920, which is our baseline year, and you see that we, between the four partners, we had a little over 1,300 students who qualified for free and reduced lunch, and then our target number would be for next year to have a little over 1,000 additional free and reduced lunch students that qualify and be able to receive the scholarship to attend this programming and be a part of that. So as we look at the financials as a, as a whole, big picture again, that goes 2,371 scholarship students, calculates out to a little over 2.0, almost 2.4 million in scholarship cost. And the academic piece, the cost to add the academics into the programming, results in 95 staff members being hired across the four different partners for a little under $1 million in staff costs, and then a little over $100,000 in academic supplies cost. Which brings us to our total of, again, 3.4 million for the entire project. So summarize, again, the, the target here is to, to focus on outside-of-the-box approach to impacting learning loss and helping to remove barriers from our most under-resourced students and their families, and creating a targeted systematic learning time across all of our before and after school care services that wasn't there before. And we're, we're so excited about how our partners have jumped on board and been, been open to making these changes to what their, what their daily programming looks like. Then finally, the final piece is, is providing those scholarships for our free and reduced lunch students to be able to attend this program. Questions you have for Dr. Nguyen or not?
Yeah. Questions, Sharita?
You know, I would have some, right?
Well, I did see your hand.
So I am, you know, I think we have some great community So I am, you know, I think we have some great community partners who do a great job with supporting our children in the before and after program, programming that they've already been engaged in. My only concern has just been that $3.5 million is a lot of money to commit to expand programming that has no real history with these programs. I mean, they have goals that I've had the opportunity to read on their own annual reports that they have posted on their websites. But academics, other than some, you know, after-school homework help and maybe some minor tutoring for some of the programs, has been part of their programming. So it just concerns me to provide so much money to, you know, expand in a way that they have not done before.
Right. And I can appreciate that. And certainly, we recognize that this is a, we're working with partners and providing them with resources that are connected to the school and directly connected to, you know, their grade level learning outcomes. And so that's, this would be a shift for them certainly as well. And so that's certainly.
So we have a major issue with regards to the learning loss that our students have experienced in last year. And we're, you know, just hoping for some good outcome with these kinds of programs. And I believe that some of them may be able to do it, but I am concerned. I've utilized those programs before for my own foster children who used the before and after school care programs. And, you know, it's a great opportunity for childcare, but it really was not an opportunity for my, my students' experience, was not an opportunity for academics. And I'm just concerned about, you know, how much time is going to be committed to academics? Is it optional for students to participate in the academics? I know that they're going to be hiring, but what kind of training will they require of the people who are going to be hiring? I read the research about the kinds of after-school and before-school programs. The ones that are more effective are the ones who actually hired credential people rather than high schoolers or college students. Even though college students can do a great job with supervision, the reality is that the research doesn't support that they are the best when they are doing it on their own without training. So I'm hoping that there's going to be training. I don't know. I mean, I appreciate this report that's being provided, but it still leaves a lot of questions.
I think you raise a good question. And that, and a sub-question is to, perhaps it's, you're available to answer it now or bring it back to us, but in terms of who is, who is doing the hiring, who is doing the training? Those are some sub-questions, yes?
Me?
Yes.
Excuse me, please. Hi. First of all, I'm grateful for the question because I live this every day and I'm incredibly passionate about what you just said. And I can only speak on behalf of Boys and Girls Club because that's where I've been for 10 years. Our program actually doesn't change that much. The academic component is one of the three pillars at Boys and Girls Club and has been for 83 years. 97% of our kids are on track to graduate with a plan for the future, and I take great pride in that. What I will tell you is, as you can see from those numbers, Boys and Girls Club has the largest amount of kids that we anticipate serving. And I will say, our collaborative conversations, everybody in the room, the right people at the table in my opinion, this is an undertaking that I think we're capable and ready to do. And I am so unbelievably ready for this challenge because I get to live it and see it every single day, what our kids have gone through over the last year, and I'm confident in our team to deliver. When we were having conversations about, I want to open a Boys and Girls Club in every school and every neighborhood across this entire state, that's like big picture dream. But I think the plan that we have come up with is attainable, and I think it would be helpful maybe for the board to understand how I onboard people who come to Boys and Girls Club and work at Boys and Girls.
That is helpful.
Yes. And the trainings they go through and the background checking and all of that, I think ideally, it'd be awesome to have certified teachers running these programs after school, but it's just not going to happen. And what ideally this will look like for us is a part of our same training process, but the people we hire as academic coordinators are not going to be just regular staff members who are helping us in the gym or helping us in the games room. These are going to be people who are passionate about bridging academic gaps. And I, again, just speaking on behalf of Boys and Girls Club, but these conversations, we understand what COVID has done, and we are ready to take on this challenge. And yes, I'm happy to give you the onboarding guides, the training guides, and everything. I'm just ready to help these kids, and I think all of us are.
Yeah, we're, you know, we'll, at the end of the day, when the numbers come back in a year, it's going to be these people up here are going to be held responsible. So I'm just trying to put the best foot forward at the beginning to make sure that I'm expressing those concerns and you're answering those concerns, just knowing that a year from now, they're going to come back to us and say.
100%, yeah.
What happened?
Absolutely. And I think in these conversations that we've had collaboratively across all four agencies, I think it has been made abundantly clear to us how important this academic piece is. And I think it's been made abundantly clear to other after-school agencies that maybe don't prioritize that at all times. I think we have a really good plan. And what's been so awesome is the collaboration with the school district, how unbelievably willing they've been to share resources, ideas. Here are activities, enrichment activities, academic-related activities, like they're setting us up for success too. And I think we all have our, we're ready.
Thank you for your response to Sharita's question. And I would, I've got, I'm sure we've got several questions here, but how will students and parents become aware? So I see your growth numbers, which is brave, which is brave and great all at the same time. But how will students and parents know that these additional services are going to be available?
As soon as we have the green light to move forward with funding, we'll be able to start a comprehensive marketing plan and be able to push out that this is available. And it'll be across, obviously, with our partners and also SPS partnering to make sure that the marketing messaging gets out and that they understand that scholarships are available and that they can apply for those scholarships. And obviously, they're, we're limited because we have unlimited funding.
Right.
And so it'll be a push to get those scholarship applications in early.
Okay. All right, Denise was.
That was my question.
Yeah, okay.
And I would, I would guess that the scholarship assistance would help considerably with recruiting children.
Transportation, greatest barrier. Second is cost.
Okay. And if there is money left over, if the money isn't used, then what happens to that money? Has there been a conversation at your table about that?
Yes. And there's going to, I mean, throughout the course of the year, there'll be checkpoints as we check to see where we're at on our status of meeting our target of 75%. And so if we, obviously, the payment structure will be done in a way that pays for actual students that are in attendance, not blanket for the, you know, the target.
Okay.
So as we get closer to our target, we'll know that we're nearing our cap and have to make adjustments.
Okay, all right. Scott and then Danielle, or did I see?
Okay, and Charles too. But, yes, if I could go real quick. Thank you. You guys provide a great service, and I think you answered a lot of my questions about, especially the barriers, what the top areas there are. I heard transportation and the cost of the program. But what I didn't hear, maybe I just missed it, is the time per day that you're going to spend on academics. What are your thoughts there?
So we have allocated three hours during the day for that academic coordinator position to be on staff and at the site. And so there's going to be some planning involved in that, but there's a couple hours there, a window of time when students will be able to be, have some, be scheduled with that academic coordinator. And they will be targeting those students that have, you know, the greatest need and are below grade level and spend their time with those students where they can make the greatest impact.
So if students don't have homework, will they still be targeted for services? And would you require that they still get targeted services?
Yes. So, and it's not just homework. It's not homework help, especially with those students that have the greatest need. There's learning activities tied directly to grade level standards, which is, which goes back to the resources that are approved by the district and align with our current curriculum. But students that are on grade level obviously don't need the same level of support and so won't need the time with those academic coordinators, but will still have opportunity with other staff to make sure they leave and go home with no homework and have those, that taken care of during their time. That answers your question.
I have two questions. One is a quick, easy question, and the other one is more lengthy. But first, I want to say thank you for your team looking into this and putting thought behind it. You can tell that it has been thought out. And thank you to our community partners for being involved in this. The quick, easy question, you said that the scholarships will be provided to those who qualified for free and reduced lunch and meet academic criteria. What are those academic criteria?
Yeah, so at the start of the year, obviously, our goal is to get as many free and reduced lunch kids involved as possible. And so the initial criteria will just be free and reduced lunch. And then as we hit checkpoints throughout the year, if we see that we're approaching our cap, then we'll have, we'll start to incorporate additional criteria such as targeting K-5 students. It's kind of our first cap criteria. And then looking at just free students versus free and reduced, and then looking at students that are below grade level. So that, as we go throughout the year and hit those checkpoints, we'll start to incorporate our criteria from there.
Okay. And that leads to my second question that I'm hearing maybe pieces of the answer here with the checkpoints. How are you going to gauge success and how often are you going to gauge that and what reports are we going to receive regarding that success?
Yeah. So one of our biggest data point will be how well we do in reaching our target of 75% growth. That's an aggressive number. Again, we want to, we want to get those students involved in our after-school programming. That'll be a primary data point, but then we'll also look at three things we call our ABCs, attendance, behavior, curriculum, you know, data, and look at how those students, how those particular students that are enrolled in a before-after school programming are performing across those three metrics in comparison to previous years.
And how often will that occur?
So that would be, I mean, in order to actually look at attendance, behavior, and curriculum, those, they'll have to correlate with our benchmarks, you know, throughout at the end of the year. And so they'll be, we'll look at the big picture at the end of the year, but something that we'll certainly be monitoring quarterly as we look at, you know, again, those three metrics for all of our students throughout the district.
Go ahead.
Well, first, I want to say this frankly strikes me as Springfield at our best. When Springfield really collaborates and we, we do have a tendency to be freakishly collaborative, and I say that in the best possible sense. And I think this is very much a significant and laudable for SPS and community. So kudos on that. And one thing, Mike, that you mentioned there at the very end, and this is the thing that I want to focus on, there are many, many benefits of this, right? Safe and secure childcare, mental health supports, et cetera, et cetera. We lead with the academic piece. In this case, it's the learning loss. And that's going to be the thing for the nerds among us that we're going to focus on in assessing the impact of that. And it's messy and it's hard, right? And it's not a one-to-one relationship. What I hope doesn't happen is that that begins to fall out because it's doing lots of other good things too. But if we're going to lead with the learning loss, we need to stay focused on that. I mean, for example, we do have some experience, I think Explore is extraordinary in many, many ways, be led with stopping the summer slide. And the data were a little fuzzy here and there, and then we just stopped talking about it, right? What I don't want to have happen is for us to stop talking about closing or remedying that learning loss. And I have great faith in you all to do that.
Great. Any other questions at this time?
Yeah, I have one other question. I know that in your report, you started off by talking about attendance. And I'm assuming that built into this framework of getting the kids into these four programs that we're assuming that's going to aid in some of the attendance issues. Are there any other structures built into these programs that are going to assist with managing or increasing attendance issues?
So the short answer is that obviously, the attendance piece and the impact on the regular school day attendance is obviously tied to.
All of it.
All of it.
All of it.
And so I guess that's, that's a good piece of feedback for us to continue to make that something that we can, I think, work with partners to, because obviously, we know the importance. Attendance incentives kind of went to the wayside this year for lots of reasons, but that may be something as we look ahead, how we continue to partner with our wraparound care to add to that as well.
Yes. Brandy.
I'm just going to say during these conversations, it was abundantly, abundantly clear, and even during any focus group I lead or listening and learning tour I did, the greatest barrier to access to Boys and Girls Club services was transportation. We've listened to that, and we are starting to change our model to meet kids where they are. I mean, a lot of these conversations that we're having are Boys and Girls Clubs switching their model to be in schools. So you eliminate the barrier of transportation. If you're dropping your kids off, we'll be there in the morning, they're there at school, we're there after school. So ideally, that helps families, especially ones who have trouble getting across town. Our, our regular models, our traditional models where we bus in from 36 different schools across the city, they still remain. But if we are going to reach that 1,800 number, we're going to have to think creatively about our 16-vehicle fleet to take kids home who need it. And I, I want those vehicles to be used because I pay for them. So I am, I am like, if we, if a barrier is transportation, I'm, I want to eliminate it as best as we can. So we are switching our model during these conversations to meet more kids where they are, and in my opinion, the highest need kids that I've been able to identify given my experience, so.
So we haven't heard from Sheila, and I know your beeper's probably going off.
I think you're about to expire.
Which means you may have an emergency going on.
That's all right.
But, but I know several times it appears you've had something you wanted to tell us, so.
I just think, I think the academic piece, Dr. Taylor, is important, and that's been our focus in each of our meetings. And I think we have been very consistent with, that's what our major goal is. I think there are some sub-goals, wraparound care, so based on what happens with transportation, we think that's going to get more kids in automatically, maybe at different levels depending on what time we start and what time we finish the day. The food piece was very important for us also, just helping students all in all aspects, knowing that the academic piece is really our focus and that's what we want to monitor and really assess. But yeah, we think our numbers are going to go in a great direction.
Okay. One little clarification. Academic supply cost, you say on one thing slide, it's $30 per student, and the next, you had it up here, it's $46 per student. And, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, it should be 30. It was a $30, that's, that's how we calculated it, was as a $30 per student allocation for the supplies piece. I'm not sure where the 46 would have been.
Where's the 46?
The 46 is 108,998 divided by 2, 3, 7, 1.
On slide 14.
On slide 14.
Is that right?
Or 15.
15.
There are other students that are not FRL that are in those programs that will be supported also.
Yes. Yep. The supplies cost is for little students, not just free and reduced lunch. Yes, thank you.
Boom, thank you. All right.
Good question.
I just wanted to make.
Yep, that's great. Yes, thank you.
Sharita?
No, good question, Sharita. More questions only because I'm very passionate about this, as you all know. And so the, well, we're going to get to the budget with Carol Embry in a second, but one of the other SRT funds categories that we have is the school-community liaison. I'm hoping that that person will be working very closely with our community partners because I think they play, they're going to play a huge role with regards to attendance and with regards to behavior and some of the other social-emotional health stuff. So I'm hoping that that person works very, and I hope that that, it's not in the memorandum of understanding that we have written as of now, but I hope that that is a part of the relationship that we're building.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a natural, that's a natural liaison there.
The most success that Boys and Girls Club sees in our, are in our school-based sites at Fremont and Sherwood is regular communication with teachers, school liaisons, counselors. That's, that's where you see the most academic success.
Yep, I agree.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Miriam, you have a question?
Yes, and I think you've partially answered it. It had to do with the transportation barrier. So logistically, now kids, I assume, are being bused to a central location, but you're hoping to make it at each school. I know there's 95 instructional staff members, so we, you know, try to place everyone. So the students get dropped off via the normal transportation, and there's, that should reduce the barrier. That's what you're thinking because they'll just stay at school.
Yeah.
And the problem is the bus is no longer operating, right? Is that?
So I will, okay, so again, I'm just going to speak for Boys and Girls Club. You would probably know more about the other agencies. But the way it works now is our three traditional units, they're these massive buildings, and we bus in from all over the school district. Then we have two school-based sites.
You bus in or the public school?
We do. Boys and Girls Club. Not me, I do not.
You have a bus.
Yes. So we pick them up at our school and bus them to our location. And that works really well for a lot of families, and a lot of kids are successful in that environment. But when we're talking about academic success and reducing barriers, our Fremont location, our Sherwood location, which is our Sertomi unit, and in August. our Sherwood location, which is our Surtomi unit, and in August, Williams will be opening the O'Reilly unit at Williams Elementary. But right now, that's a perfect example. We serve 21 kids from Williams because we're limited by our transportation capabilities. We anticipate serving 200 kids at Williams in the building. So I, I don't think this solves the transportation piece, but it excites me because it, it is one less thing for a family or a parent in need to have to worry about.
That $1,000 scholarship would cover the transportation. So a family wanted to opt, but they couldn't provide transportation. Would that $1,000 cover their transportation? Or is that still a barrier?
Can I ask it one more time, sorry?
So let's say a family wanted to opt for it, and they qualified for the scholarship. Would, but they can't provide transportation. So can they still participate?
I think, I think we have almost every school covered, honestly. So all of us get in a room, and we just kind of divided and conquered and figured out the best way. Every single school in Springfield will have a wraparound program for transportation to one of us.
And so when you say wraparound, so it's before school and after school?
If it's a-
The three hours, I'm assuming, is a combination of before and after, because some of the schools will be starting later. And so there will be more time in the morning. So that transportation, if you, it sounds like you've solved it.
I think so, but I haven't-
So that's, so we've checked that box, and we've checked the financial piece, so.
Yeah. And the hope is, people show up, and then we change the lives of children. That's what I, I'm very hopeful about it. Again, I have no idea how it will turn out, but I will tell you, the right people were in the room, and all of us are very passionate about remove barriers, keep kids safe.
So it's there if somebody wants it. So we can market that.
Yes. And with the marketing team here at SPS, I feel like everyone will have the opportunity to know it exists. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll, I believe that concludes our questions so that we can move forward with our agenda, and that we thank you for presenting and giving us-
Thank you.
-in greater detail. And obviously, we are, we know that this is a new fund of money that's coming in. And we know early on that we heard from board members in our community that collaborating and using our existing partners and working together to meet a need is critical. And so I, I thank you for that. I also believe you can hear there's risk involved. You know there's risk involved. We are acknowledging there's risk involved. And so we have accountability to the funds that we're getting ready to look to approve. And so that's what you're hearing. You're hearing our support, and you're hearing the risk that comes with that. And we just thank you for staying on top of that and continuing to assess that, and reporting that back to us, and, and helping recommend those adjustments as we move forward to take care of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll read the recommended action. Is that the board authorizes the execution of the memorandum of understanding for utilization of stimulus funds to support before and after school services for students as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion?
Sure.
Charles will make the motion. Danielle will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is benefits renewal, which we have already received that presentation at the prior meeting. The recommended action is that the board approves the benefit renewal recommendations as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Sharita will make the motion. Scott will second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is our FY 2021, 2022 budget. And Carol has already made that presentation to us at the previous board meeting. So I've simply just asked her to highlight a few items tonight before I read the recommended action. Carol?
So we have posted for you on board docs, the actual budget document. That is our standard document that complies with Missouri statute. And as Dr. Leonard identified, I shared a multitude of data points at the last meeting. I'll highlight for you that the final recommendation represents a total revenue budget of $407,781,159. Total expenditures, $513,198,450. And remember that that bond expenditures would be much higher than bond revenue as we continue to spend and deliver on those projects. So there's the gap there. With regard to operating funds, we have revenue of $330,643,167, and expenditures of $325,595,75. In addition to aligning to our strategic plan and our primary budget priorities, the changes that were provided for you in the presentation posted include the specificity relative to landing the collective bargaining agreements and the overall recommendation for salary and benefits. We did provide in this presentation the DESI student data, the student-teacher ratio data that we had previously provided you. We also finalized some of the numbers on those other funds. So we were able to land those completely since the majority of accounts payable and payroll has been landed. So it is a balanced budget. The last slide provides you with information regarding our days of operation. It seems like a large number when you look at the total fund balance, but what we have available to run on from an operating perspective is 48.81 days. Comparing that to last year, that was 43.15 days. So we're in the, the same space on that. So that represents the full budget change recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Carol. I'm going to go ahead and read the recommended action and see if we can get a motion on the floor, and then I'll see if there's any discussion. The recommended action is that the board approves the 2021, 2022 budget as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? Denise will make the motion. Is there a second? Sharita will second it. Is there any discussion or comments at this point before we vote? Okay. Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is collective bargaining agreements. That brings Ms. Embry back up to the podium.
Yes. So Mrs. Penny Rector is not able to be with us this evening, and she truly deserves the credit for navigating all of the collective bargaining meetings and discussions, and is a valuable team player in that regard. We do have the five bargaining units. I would like to recognize that this evening in the audience, we have Mrs. Laura Mullins, who represents the Springfield NEA, or our teachers' unit, and is serving as president and moving into a new role. So the collaborative work that takes place on behalf of kids and the teachers supporting them, and other employees supporting kids is just phenomenal. While they advocate for their respective units, we all keep at the heart of our conversations, the focus on kids and doing good for them. So this evening, the presentation includes all of the collective bargaining agreements that have been redlined. It includes side letters that were reached as well. And we've highlighted for you whether this is language and economics, when that will next occur. So for instance, under the teachers' agreement, the term is July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2020. So next year, during the same window of time, basically January through the 1st of June, the unit and Ms. Rector and others on the team will meet, and they will be providing then recommendations for language and economics for approval at this time next year. With regard to the nurses' unit, the agreement is for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023, with economics bargained annually. So this is a two-year agreement for language. The same applies to SESP, which is our Springfield Educational Support Personnel, and that's a group of maintenance and custodians and warehouse employees, a number of other employees. And in this situation, it's a July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023, again, with economics bargained annually. The miracle group, again, represented by NEA, is the same window of time as SESP. And then lastly, our Teamsters recommendation is for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. And so all of these agreements have been ratified by the corresponding units, and our recommendation is fully presented for your consideration. Within each of these, it allows for a step and a 3% cost of living adjustment for employees.
Okay, all right. At this time, I'll read the recommended, the recommended action and see if there is a motion. The recommended action is that the board approve the superintendent or designate to sign the collective bargaining agreements as presented. Charles will make the motion. Sharita will second it. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is compensation plans 2021, 2022. Carol?
So while this is very connected to that which you just approved, it also includes other employees that are not part of collective bargaining units. And so it's the full compensation plan or salary schedule. And this is something much like our budget amendments. We continually bring that forward to you, any changes that might be necessary throughout the year, and you have that for your consideration. So the primary changes have been posted and highlighted in a separate document for your preview prior to this meeting. And I do want to highlight, though, we've provided you the information regarding the stipend calibration, and I am super thrilled that we have incorporated that in the recommendation this evening. And again, credit goes to a number of employees. Again, the, the individuals who receive the stipend, fill out forms, you're going to have to go. And then we had teams of people reviewing them and calibrating them to provide the proper placement. And the recommendation does include that we grandfather those employees that would be adversely impacted through this recommendation. So happy to land that. That was a hanging, remaining item on my task list from the June 2019 compensation study recommendation to the board.
Excellent. The recommending, the action is that the board approve the 2021, 2022 salary schedule as presented. Would somebody be willing to make the motion? Miriam will make the motion. Is there a second? Sharita will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes. Before we go to our next agenda item, I just want to acknowledge, Carol, thank you for, for you and your team for landing those last three items. That is huge, huge work, and tireless work that goes into that. So thank you for keeping us in the loop throughout this entire process and answering our ongoing questions as they surface. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is our bond project updates and actions, the change orders and agreements. That brings us to Travis Shaw. Good evening, Travis.
Good evening. I have for you this evening just a few items on our change order agreement list. A half of the total represents physical education equipment at both Boyd and Williams, representing about 17,000 in each one of those schools. And then the other half is represented by seven different individual change orders for the Boyd project. It represents just under 37,000. So the total before you tonight, for your consideration, is $73,498.64. Any questions you have?
Any questions for Travis on these items before I read the recommended action? Okay. The recommended action is that the board approves the change orders and agreements as presented. Is there someone willing to make that motion? Danielle will make the motion. Scott will second it. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you, Travis, for the update. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is public comments to address non-agenda items. I will read our statement. The Board of Education, while law, comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited, limited to three minutes for each speaker will be timed by the Board Secretary. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members in name and open meeting. If you have any concerns about individuals, these comments should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in schools or in the district office. The board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. If you have materials that you would like to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary prior to speaking, and she will distribute them to board members. Tonight, if they are still with us, we have six public speakers for non-agenda items. The first public speaker is Joan Gentry. She is speaking on equity and diversity. Good evening, Joan.
Hi, I'm the Board Secretary.
Yes. Thank you.
This is a topic very briefly, but I'm excited to- My name is Joan Gentry, and I'm here to speak in support of our school district's focus area on equity and diversity. I'm a retired middle school teacher. I spent 22 years at Studebys. Our son graduated from Parkview. We have a granddaughter who just finished eighth grade from Pipkin, and a grandson who just graduated from Central. But I'm not here as a former teacher, a parent, or grandparent. I'm here representing the League of Women Voters. Year 2020 was not important just for the pandemic. It was really important as, in the role of voting rights. We celebrated in February the 100-year anniversary of the League of Women Voters being established, and the 19th Amendment, and both of those occurring in 1920. You might ask, you know, what does this have to do with diversity and equity in Springfield, Missouri, and the school system? I just want you to know that there's a lot of history involved here on both levels. I'm proud to point out the role of the League of, that the League of Women Voters played in guaranteeing the right of women to vote. I have to acknowledge that in 1920, the guarantee of the right to vote was not equitable, nor was the voting population diverse, diverse. White women got the right to vote, but barriers were already in place or put in place to prevent men and women of color from voting. The voting population was not diverse, nor was the ability to vote equitable. And I have to also acknowledge that white suffrage leaders worked in segregated suffragist organizations and ignored the efforts of black suffragists. The founding of the League of Women Voters U.S. and the ratification of the 19th Amendment provided a big step toward more inclusive democracy that neither, it did not address the multiple issues of equity. I think it's important to acknowledge our history, to look at where we are and where we want to be. And that's what I see as happening with the League of Women Voters and with Springfield Public Schools. In 2020, the League of Women Voters added a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy statement into its bylaws, and I've provided you with the rationale for that. I think the important thing is it simply states that the LWB is an organization fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and in practice. And I feel like that's the direction Springfield Public Schools is moving. Thank you. That's a quick three minutes.
Yes, you did great. Thank you, Joan, and thank you for representing the League of Women Voters, which is an incredible group, a well-organized, engaged group in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. And anytime anybody wants to call on us to do any voting rights, we're here, okay?
Awesome. Thank you so much. Our next public speaker is Dr. John Vaughn. Dr. John Vaughn. Okay, we'll see if he comes back. Our next public speaker is Lola Butcher. Good evening, Lola. You, you took a pass a couple times in the past couple months, so it's great to see you.
I wanted to wait until early evening.
That's right.
My name is Lola Butcher, and I want to quickly speak in support of SPS's Focus Area 5, which makes diversity and equity a district priority. I know that the board created this focus area after a lengthy process that involved a lot of community input, and that you will be committed to continuing this important work in the future. Thank you. My main purpose, however, is to share my concern about a bill introduced in this year's session of the Missouri Legislature, House Bill 952, which would prohibit public schools from teaching some important information about American history. I know that sounds like a broad-brush remark, but that is what House Bill 952 would do. Prohibits schools from presenting factual information about the long-term effects, which continue to this day, of slavery in America. The Missouri bill did not advance in this year's session, but similar bills were introduced in 22 states this year, and have already been signed into law in Idaho, Iowa, Oklahoma, Texas, and Tennessee. I am counting on SPS board members and lobbyists to speak against this bill- I am counting on SPS Board members and lobbyists to speak against this bill when you meet with legislators. And I encourage all members of the public who are hearing these remarks to educate themselves about the national campaign to whitewash history education in public schools and work against this dangerous trend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lola. I'm going to go back. We had a gentleman re-enter. Dr. John Vaughn. Okay, all right. You have three minutes to speak, and that is on, you've stated, on family values and public education.
That's all I need.
Okay, all right. Good evening.
Very good. Last time I asked you, do you speak Chinese? July the 4th will be celebrating a big day in this country. July the 1st will be the 100th anniversary of communism in China. They have a 20-year plan for the School Board, whether you do or not. They have a plan for America. The President acknowledged that in the recent, last week or two. Now, what I want to share tonight, stick up where I left off last time. It took us 100 years for communism to kill 100 million people. 100 years to kill 100 million people. In the world of abortion, you kill 12 times that number. It hasn't taken 100 years to kill 100 million. It's taken only 30 years to wipe out 1.4 billion lives. I'm going to break that home in a sec here shortly. So that's in one-third the time to have this kind of a change. Hitler, it took him 11 years to kill up to maybe 17 million people. And abortion, in the last six months, as many lives have been taken. Six months, not 11 years. If this room were, the abortions that take place at any given time in this country, those four seats there would be white, those three there would be black, and these over here would be Hispanic, and those would be something else. The importance of what I'm telling you is, is that one-fourth of the black population in this country has disappeared since 1990. And then we can go back even further to Roe v. Wade. One-fourth of the black population. Instead of 40 million blacks, we have 30 million. We don't have a labor shortage in this country. We've got an extermination of life problem. The biggest difference between our extermination processes in this country has been that it was forced in Germany. It's been complicit. There've been lies that have been told, as with the Tuskegee Project. We're talking about men that for 50 years, well up into this current, this past century, experiments where lives have been experimented with. What I want to tell you is, is if we form alliances with Planned Parenthood, Margaret Siskin, what we have is we are complicit to participate in the future deaths that I've talked about here. And I just think we just need to be aware that history has lessons to teach us as to how we teach what we teach and the ways we teach it.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. Our next public speaker is Donna Kimer- Kimerthe? Mertie? Donna Kimerthe? Okay, we'll see if she comes back. Our next public speaker is Lyle Foster. Good evening, Lyle. He is here to speak on inclusion.
Good evening, members of the School Board and Dr. Jungman. Congratulations. As students have recently been fond of saying, "I ain't scared." So tonight, I'm here to say, "I ain't scared" of efforts to teach and train our educators and students. I ain't scared of sharing a more complete story and facts among the represented groups and the history of the other in this nation. You may not know, but I grew up in the shadows of Jamestown, Williamsburg, and Yorktown, Virginia, where my ancestors were brought to these shores. They taught me in those schools about the Red Letter Year, 1619. According to what I was taught, were 20 and odd Negroes came to the shores of Jamestown. But I learned little else besides they picked cotton and tobacco until I got to the point that I could explore and absorb from many other sources. Thankfully, we're learning more than that today. I encourage you as a Board to stay the course of expanding and moving forward, to allow the people you have put in place to do their jobs. There will always be the naysayers and alarmists. Our community needs the representation and the work that you are currently doing to continue. We need to add to, not take away. I applaud you for the hiring of our new superintendent, and I'm hoping and working towards her success because this is significant for not only who we are, but also for who we hope to be. I and others in this community are standing with and fully appreciative of the work and commitment of the Chief Diversity Officer and the department that is engaged in this work. They do not deserve to be grilled and maligned for working for our students' benefit. When I arrived in this city, was actually a former school superintendent who publicly stated that this was the first community he had been in when there were no community leaders in the black community. He later apologized for this statement because, of course, it was not true, and this was not understanding or discerning the leadership structure of the black community. I am so hopeful that 15 years later, we're not witnessing our district misunderstanding again our community and leadership. The efforts of Dr. Rosalyn Thomas and her groundwork, the baton that has been picked up and so beautifully carried by those who have followed should never be underestimated. Lives and families have been rescued, and education has been achieved. The work of the district's cultural diversity specialists has been extraordinary in reaching and serving families far beyond what can be done in the classroom so that they can flourish not only at SPS but for life. Please continue what you have started. I ain't scared of the truth. I ain't scared of the history, in my community's history, no matter what it is called. And I know many others feel the same way. In the shadows of the Juneteenth holiday, I look forward to additional support for all of our students and a community of educators where equity and education are not misunderstood. And we fully can support those who are trying their best to create a more inclusive district and community. But remember, I ain't scared, and neither are we. Thank you very much.
Lyle, we thank you for your voice. Thank you. Our next public speaker is Monica Horton. Monica is here to speak about the survey results of the BHSA class. And you took a pass a couple months ago, too, so it's good to see you.
Nice to see you, too, Alina. Thank you all for allowing me to be here. Last week was a wonderful week. It was a great celebration week of the Black History Summer Academy, which is what BHSA stands for. And Springfield Public Schools was one of the major sponsors, along with Drury University. And we really appreciate that. I'm not sure who developed the survey instrument. I'm used to using a different one, but this year, there was a different survey instrument, and we implemented pre and post. In terms of the impact of the Black History Summer Academy on a total of over, maybe over 150 students, I would say the majority are Springfield Public School African-American, Black biracial, Afro-Latino, a variety of different individuals of African descent. And I was actually the teacher of the high school girls, and I administered the survey to them pre-test. And the first question was, rate your knowledge of black history before participating in this year's Black History Summer Academy. 30% of the students who were in my class, and I did have 10, I started with 10, and then I ended with eight. 30% of them said that they knew some black history, and then 70% said that they knew advanced. They were pretty advanced in their knowledge. Number two, the second question was, rate your knowledge of Springfield's black history prior to your participation in this year's Black History Summer Academy. 30% said that they had little knowledge of their local history, black history. 30% said they had some knowledge, and then 40% said that they had advanced knowledge. Third question was, has your school offered classes or assignments for you to learn about black history? 50% said no, and 50% said yes. Have you ever learned about black history of Springfield at your school? 70% said no, and 30% said yes. Post-test, they looked at, how would you rate the importance of students learning black history in context to the backdrop of structural and systemic racism here in America? And they said that it was 100% important. 100% of them said it was very important. And then we also asked, how has your participation in the Summer Academy helped you? And they gave a variety of open-ended responses. But I also wanted to kind of bring up the question of, do you think your participation in Black History Summer Academy will help you in your schoolwork? 75% of the students said yes. 12.5% said no. And the last question was, what new thing did you learn? And they gave a variety of responses. So I think that this gives us some good feedback in terms of the benefits of learning various different types of histories within the school district and how that can impact their performance on their schoolwork.
Thank you, Monica. And I don't, I'm unaware if that was an SPS or an independent survey, as far as who created that, as far as who has the results of that.
Well, you know, Gwen Marshall, she actually is the director of that program, so she probably got some direction and some consultation, perhaps from the diversity and equity access.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing. Okay, that concludes our public comments for non-agenda items. Our next agenda item is Administrative Reports from Administration. Dr. Jungman.
Yeah, I'm just going to wrap up some summaries from the team. We are in the middle of Explore, as we know. So over halfway home with June already, so we'll be wrapping that up soon and in full planning mode, getting ready for July. Things are going successfully. We would know that COVID cases have been on the rise a little bit, just like in our community. So we've had 22 students and seven staff members since Explore. And we've had some classrooms that have to go to masking during that environment. We try to keep everyone engaged and letting them know, and some quarantines that have to happen. So it's the new approach that we're trying out over the summer, and we're hoping to be able to execute successfully in the fall. But to make that happen, as true, community vaccination is going to have to continue to rise, I think. And we're trying to pride all opportunities for our kids and parents to have access through our nursing teams on our sites and through schools. So we're continuing to work with CDC regarding the study of Explore cases and contacts and anything else we can change for the fall to make sure school can run successfully in person as planned. And we continue to engage all the time with our Health Department through that process. So they're great advisors to us and give us counsel around when we mask and help us with contact tracing. Equity and diversity, you heard a little bit in comments, but SPS has been busy and was well-represented at the NAACP Juneteenth Celebration this weekend. We were able to engage with a whole bunch of people in attendance, so appreciate the community for coming out and the team for being a part of that, as well as participated in the Black History Summer Academy service to students that you just heard about. On the communication side, we are pushing out information from Stevens Department regarding events for public to engage with Dr. Lathan, as she is scheduled to arrive in District and start to make some community engagements beginning on the 24th, this month of this week. So that information has been sent out to the public, and people can register to attend. This is an in-person event, and there'll be another one on the 28th. I think that one of them is at Kickafu on Thursday at 6:00, and the following is at Parkview on Monday at 6:00. So please hit the website and look for communication. Encourage people to come out and meet our new superintendent. We're also pushing out information regarding pandemic electronic benefits, opportunities for our students who are free and on free and reduced lunch, and families may apply now. The deadline is July 31st for access to this resource. And lastly, in the area of communications and service to our district, generous volunteers from United Way participated in the Day of Caring last week. We had projects go on at Weller, at Bentley, at Watkins, at our Sense of Pride store at Weaver, and on numerous others. We really appreciate United Way and all the community partners that spent time in our schools helping us with a myriad of projects. So that is the major academic update. I can move to legislative update, if that's okay?
That'd be great, yes, please.
And a couple important things to note. We're still tracking no action on 349 at this point and still continuing to urge the veto from the Governor. Time is running short for that, so we hope that happens soon. You may have saw some information come out from his office yesterday regarding potential restriction beginning July 1st of $722 million in fiscal 22 spending. So that's next year's budget. And it seems like a weird time, knowing that we have surpluses, right, in our budget, that we might need to do that. But it's directly tied to the federal reimbursement allowance called FRA that did not pass during the legislative session. That is a typical thing that passes every year. That puts us on the hook for 700, or a lack of 700 million-plus federal dollars to come support medical needs in our state. In that, he has asked the Legislature to come to an agreement on how to work in a special session to authorize that so that these restrictions don't have to come into place. SPS would be on the hook for some of the restrictions, $20 million in transportation funding, which was the increase for this year. The actual impact of that's about $350,000 in the overall budget. So it's not huge, but it's meaningful. But if you look at the state budget, $720 million hole cuts a lot of programming and supports for a lot of, and higher ed is a big piece of that, a lot of issues across the state. My understanding that after that announcement, work went through today, and the Governor heard from different representatives and senators that they believe they can pass that, and asked them to call him and them in a special session, and we believe that could start as early as tomorrow. So that's media attention. We haven't got the official word from our lobbyist, but that's the word, and I do believe that could be very current and could be coming as soon as tomorrow. So hopefully, we're able to get special session started, we're able to get the FRA passed, restrictions then fall away, and the budgets you just adopted can go forward cleanly and not have a quick amendment as we start the school year.
Tom, what is the deadline for vetoing, signing, or just doing nothing and letting it become law?
It's in July. I don't have the date off the top of my head. It's first to second week of July, where it's either a veto or non-signing allows it to go into law, right? So he can choose to sign, not sign, or veto. The action we're seeking, obviously, is a veto. That's the only thing that pulls it off at this point. So running out of time, but hasn't signed it either, right? So we're still in that middle ground. So that's the legislative update, so the Legislature could be getting back at it relatively soon, and we hope they do in order to resolve those issues for the state budget. That's Ann Bitten reports and legislative updates.
Okay, great. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is Board Comments of a couple things, and then I'll see if there's any other Board comments. I just want to remind our fellow Board members that Scott and Danielle went through their MSBA official training last Thursday. Do either one of you, they spent 10 days, 10 days.
Not like 10 days.
10 hours in person at University Plaza. Either one of you want to comment on just that and just making the Board aware?
I think it was so beneficial, all the activities they did and the networking we got to do at that point, better than the online portion that we had to do with the 10 hours of that. And as I said, it was very interactive and getting to meet other people from other districts, St. Rose, Kansas City, everywhere in between, it was good.
Great, great. Yeah, thanks, guys, for getting that done. I know, I just also want to add that Charles, Denise and I attended the MSBA conference portion on Friday, again at University Plaza, and were able to attend various sessions and also hear from our Commissioner on Education, who did a great job sharing with us. Any other comments from Denise or Charles on that?
Ray Murphy was elected president for next year of MSBA. The Board meeting, Executive Board meeting was on Friday morning. He represents a very small district, so I think that captures the nuance and the texture of the MSBA.
Okay, great. Thanks for mentioning that. And we also serve as the delegates here, and we were a part of the voting assembly on Friday afternoon. So just mentioning that as well. Any other Board comments at this time?
Long day.
What'd you say?
It was a long day.
Yes, yes. A warm day at University Plaza.
Yeah.
Yes, Miriam.
I'm sorry. My turn?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to make a couple of comments. I wanted to make a couple of comments, and I jotted them down in respect of the board's I wanted to make some clarification points, and I would appreciate you letting me finish. John, it's coming to an end for you, so please don't tell me to not speak or make hand motions to that effect, as you have done so previously. I would like to make some clarification statements from our last board meeting. I asked you, my fellow board members, to help me move up the discussion with regards to the role of technology in our classrooms. Because as, as you know, I believe that its inappropriate implementation has played a significant role in decline of our student achievements, both academically and emotionally, most acutely realized in our under-resourced students. I begged for your help, and I was reminded about the lack of loyalty, my loyalty, to the board. Sharita, you are indeed correct. Allow me to clarify who my allegiance is to. First and foremost, it is to the students in our district, and then to the citizens who pay to have them educated in our system. So I wanted to make clear that point. You know, while I certainly seek and I strive and appreciate the rapport and the friendly association we have in this mutual endeavor to serve the hard-working citizens of the district, it is not my intent to conform because of what use am I if I do that? How does my assent with this group think help the students in our district? I call it group think because we don't have discussions, because we ignore important information and we censor problematic information. For the sake of unanimity, we don't problem-solve and we ultimately fail our students. All the while with this illusion of optimism and invulnerability. I'm not disloyal or traitorous or whatever you wanna call it. I intend to serve my community by sharing my knowledge and the wisdom of my experiences. I may not have served on other boards, but I have saved lives, so I do have something to contribute. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help us leave the district, but it does not include obedience to an unwarranted and misguided allegiance to the board. And so as we prepare for a new academic year, I'd like to remind us all of the oath we took by reading mine. I, Maryam Mohamedkani, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws and constitution of the State of Missouri, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for the school district of Springfield R-12 of Green County, Missouri, to best of my ability. So help me God. Just a couple more points. Judah, you also said that you were sorry that I quote-unquote felt marginalized, and so I wanted to clarify that point. I have been disparaged and demeaned in what amounts to being bullied and discriminated against. I suspect in the same manner that our teachers have been, ironically, by a system that preaches inclusivity. My requests for budgetary articles and various records have been essentially ignored and the responses we have received ineffective. I am speaking to you, Dr. Jungman.
You're speaking to the board.
Well, all of you.
We are on the board.
But you don't respond to me. My responses-
Your board comments are to the board.
Yes, but my responses-
Please continue.
You ask my emails to go to you and Dr. Jungman, and the responses all come from the district. So when I say that my, the responses have been ineffective, that's who it's coming from. Thank you. You know, if I have to give examples, why can't I call the building principal for permission to visit a school? Why am I not allowed to contact the teacher? Why am I not allowed to speak with district employees? I've yet to be granted by this board an audience with the superintendent. And I, we, we've been lied to. For instance, Dr. Jungman told us that critical race theory was not a part of the staff or student training. I have to say the evidence is contradictory. Our curriculum adoption will use a scorecard, as we talked about previously, developed by the NYU Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and the Transformation of Schools, whose research is admittedly based on critical race theory. I think there's enough, had been enough discussion on this topic that the district can't ignore ignorance on its content. Now, okay, please understand, I'm not here to argue one way or the other. That's not my intent, that's not why I'm making this comment. I ask a lot of questions, as you've realized, because I am trying to figure out why we are failing. Why are our subgroups failing? We have to talk about these issues. We don't have to agree with each other, we don't have to agree with the voters, but we do have to tell the truth. I deserve to know the truth. I deserve answers. The taxpayers deserve to know the truth. And so I think it's deeply concerning that the district withholds information so blatantly from us. I'd like to finish off by explaining my no vote on the budget. I cannot vote for a budget that not only delivers substandard curriculum and substandard technology, but it actively harms our students, particularly our under-resourced students. We are on the wrong path with these Chrome Works, and everybody knows it. We're not a lost cause because we still have accomplished teachers. They are the precious commodity that we will protect, we will defend, and we have a community that is, that cares, that is committed. And at the end of the day, we can take comfort in the fact that this is not rocket science. We just have to educate these kids. We did it before, we can do it again. So I want to conclude by saying that it is my hope that with Dr. Lathan, we can move away from the culture of tyranny that has infected our district and the autocracy that has dominated our educational system. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Maryam. Our next agenda item is upcoming meetings.
We have a follow-up comments, because this is the board comment section, so-
You've got a comment?
I think, Charles-
Go ahead.
Well, I, I hope that you feel better now that you had your audience, but-
My audience.
Yes. I hope you feel better now that you've had your audience.
We've had private conversations, but it's nice to have one with everybody.
That's my point. So as I sat quietly as you talk, just so quietly as I talk, right? So I'm glad that you had your audience, and so I think it's unfortunate that you feel like you've been bullied by this board, because the observation from my end and from the, from the end of the audience that I've heard from is that you've been the bully to this board and to this building, and that, you know, I think part of the reason that you may have felt that you have been restrained from getting the audience that you want is because you approach things in a way like you're interrogating everyone, and no one wants to be interrogated by you. So it's unfortunate that you feel that you, it's, it's interesting that you feel like you've been the bully, because my, my hearing is that you've been the bully in this situation, and I think lots of people who have observed our meetings have seen you as the bully in this situation. Nonetheless, I do not participate in group think. I have my opinions, and I probably ask as many questions, if not more, than you do. However, I do it in a way that does not interrogate nor demean the people who are working in this district. And so I get responses. I think you don't get responses because you come at it in a way that's attacking, and that is why you don't get responses. So I think if you want to get stuff done, you think that getting stuff done means that you just disagree. You're not gonna get anything done. The same conversation that you and I had, and we have had private, lots of not other conversations, is that if you wanna get things done, you do have to work with this group. You're not a board of one. You're a board of this whole group of all of us. And so if you wanna get stuff done, you're gonna have to work with us, even though you think that we, we don't wanna work with you. We do wanna work together, and we do have to have conversations. Do we need improvement on communication? Absolutely. I think there's an opportunity for lots of improvements in this board, and I've spoken those to you and I've spoken those in public. But we have to work together to do that. We can't just think that individually we have the power to tell people in this building or other buildings what they need to do and how fast they need to do it, because that's not our job. Individually, you have no power. Collectively, we have power. And if we're gonna get something done, we're gonna have to work together.
May I address the board president? It's a procedural, so when I ask questions, because I ask a lot, as you know, and-
Yes, we're, we're-
An email form, right? You're aware.
We're aware, yes.
You're aware. So when you send responses, do the responses, I understand, go to everybody, or is it just come to me?
I would have to look at what you're referring to. I couldn't answer that without looking at what you're referring to.
Because once in a while I get emails that have responses to questions I didn't ask. So I'm assuming that the responses to questions go to everybody. Is my assumption, so, but I have to say-
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what question you're asking.
Well, just questions that we ask. The responses go collectively to all the board members.
I would say sometimes they do and sometimes they don't, in general.
In general, okay. Because I'm not getting many responses to other people's questions. So I would like to be included so that, that would answer some of my questions.
Procedurally, any question that other board members are asking that is responded to, we would all see.
We would all see. Okay, because I'm not, I'm not, I know you ask a lot of questions, I hear them here, but I don't, I don't see many emails.
Yeah, I don't ask, I don't ask as many questions as the email, because, you know, you and I have a different experience with public education, and I, I have a lot more experience understanding public education, perhaps, than you do. I'm assuming, just based on some of the questions that were asked and some of our experiences. So I have fewer questions on those kind of procedural things. And I, I, as I mentioned to you, I've also spent two years attending these meetings before coming, so a lot of the things that happened in Springfield level schools, I was aware of prior to getting on the board. So I knew about the, the structure of the district and who works where and what programs we have, so I don't have to ask those kinds of questions. So the questions that I ask come to the public, I don't have to ask those behind-the-board kind of questions, because I did my homework ahead of time.
Us?
First, I, I would say I admire that you have the courage of your conviction. And in some ways, that, that belies the claim that you have been silenced. I have, in my experience, five-plus years on this board, no one has been silenced. You may be perhaps the least silenced of all, at least in this setting. And that is, that's not a criticism, it's not even to argue with you. My concern here is that we seem to be walking up to a point of sort of personal attacks in the board meeting. And frankly, I think unanimity is way overrated.
Absolutely.
Absolutely way overrated. I actually think we ought to disagree more and disagree publicly more. I would argue we ought to do that with civility. I have not found myself experiencing tyranny or autocracy or not even group think. I think there are seven bright, serious, engaged people around this board table. We each have our opinions. None of us gets everything we want, but we incrementally have to collaborate to make the best decisions for this district. And while I respect your right to speak your mind and admire your willingness to do so, I don't think speaking in speeches or proclamations with the broadest of brushes is helpful, from my perspective. I do think there are very different people on this board. We even have a Cubs fan sitting around this board table.
Yeah, all right.
Yikes.
All right.
But I, I, I think that we can, in fact, collaborate to make good decisions. I do want to single out something, though, because it was kind of a drive-by comment on an issue that is remarkably divisive in this community, and that is CRT. But surely, our diversity, equity, and inclusion training is, we all know that it's CRT. No, we all don't know that. I simply believe that's not the case. From my perspective, diversity is an empirical reality. Equity is an aspiration, or frankly, it's a moral imperative. And inclusion is a conscious decision, it is a practice. If we are not committed to that, we are not the district or the community that I think that we are. CRT is a boogeyman, right? It is, it frankly is an outdated theory from critical legal studies, right, that somewhat more recently found its way into educational philosophy and, and policy. It is not about asking people to hate one another or to hate ourselves because of the color of our skin, right? It, it asks us to focus on systemic inequities, that I believe are empirical realities and what the implications of those are. I do not hate myself for the color of my skin. But I would say I've worked really hard to get where I am. There is no question about that. First-generation college student, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I have to acknowledge that my path here was not made more difficult by the color of my skin, my sexual orientation or gender identity, et cetera, right? It could have been a whole bunch harder. And I think when we just toss out CRT, I think that, that does a disservice to this board, it does a disservice to the district, and frankly, it does a disservice to this community. I absolutely believe we are on the right track, and it's not a track that is dominated by CRT. Frankly, in higher ed, I don't know a track that is dominated by CRT. I think our commitment is diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need to own it. Frankly, I think we need to do it robustly, and we need to do it with swagger. That's not to say we're marginalizing anyone. It's to say that we define who, as Mr. Foster put it, who we want to become. And I believe that we are moving in the right direction. There're gonna be fits and starts and all of that. And I say that not simply to you, I say that to us collectively. But I think we've got a good board. It's gonna be, it's not gonna be dull, that's for sure, right? I don't mind a few late meetings. I don't wanna haul in at 1:00 AM very often, but I'd much rather haul in at 1:00 AM than leave important issues undiscussed reasonably and openly, and with civility, and then come to judgment on those things. I like our chances, but at a minimum, it won't be dull.
All right.
Okay.
Any other comments? Yes.
All right, Maryam. I understand your, your thoughts here and agree with you on a few of those, and I'll be with Charles on a lot of yours as well.
The Cubs family.
One thing you said is, you know, you asked the board to move up the discussion on the roles of technology, and I think we addressed that last time. At least I suggested we put it on the agenda for the upcoming retreat. It was gonna be in October, but I think we need to do it in the retreat, and you weren't here last time.
I've watched the whole thing, yes. That's all the comments, yes.
Excellent. So, and we need to have these tough discussions. I agree with those. You know, we really do. And that's the purpose, that's why we're, we're here, to have these tough discussions.
My last comment is that, you know, you know, we have new board members who've been here all of a couple of months, and to want, you know, want, the thing that you think is the most important to be pushed to the top of the agenda is just unrealistic, because there are lots of important things that need to be addressed. Many of them, you may not even be aware of, because you just don't know what you don't know, because you haven't been around that long. And so, you know, the idea that we don't care about your issue is just categorically untrue. It's just that it's not the only issue, and we got lots of issues that need to be addressed, and that is just about one of the many issues that we need to address. And, you know, so this idea that I don't care about books or literacy is just ridiculous and, you know, you know, I absolutely do, but it's, it's just one issue. We got so many. This is a, a whole district. I mean, you know, sometimes, some, you know, you may not even be aware of some of the programs that we do have, because you haven't been here long enough to even figure that out. So like, figure all, all the big picture out before you wanna just tear the whole thing apart. It's just frustrating sometimes, and I apologize if I, if I come off as frustrated, but it is frustrating when you wanna push your agenda item to the top, when there's all of these agenda items that need to be addressed.
And that is, thank you for mentioning that. That's why we have an ongoing systematic planned calendar to bring items up, and we hold those discussions at that, at those times. So yes.
So the answers to questions that I've asked in the board meeting, that I'm promised that I would receive a response to, may I share that? Because people have, you know, they come to me and they ask. I've been asked, you know, I'll give you an example, of how my questions are not answered or they're not deemed important enough. What is our classroom size? So the response is, we don't have a process in place for that.
Every question, it is my understanding that every question that you and others have asked, they come out in the various forms, and they have all been answered. So for you to say they have not been answered is-
So may I share those answers?
Is inaccurate. Any information that is shared, that is our job is to then share that information.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Our next agenda item is upcoming meetings. We have our, let's see, I don't think that's right, because we are at June 22. We are holding the, the regular scheduled meeting. So our combined meeting is Tuesday, July 13th at 5:30, which should already be on our calendar. The Learn, Lead, Succeed Leadership Kickoff, which is crazy to think- The Learn Lead Succeed Leadership Kickoff, which is crazy to think that we're in Explore, but we are already scheduling our August kickoff is scheduled for Tuesday, August 3rd at Kickfu High School. Good Morning Springfield, State of the Schools will be at Delaware Elementary Thursday, August 5th at 7:30 AM. Our combined meeting for our August is scheduled for Tuesday, August 17th. The first day of school, if you don't have that on your calendar, it is Monday, August 23rd. Just want to make sure that you've got those jotted down and Kathy and Tammy also send us the calendar invites to get those on your calendar.
So when Tammy sends us the invites, is there like a, like a brief explanation of what to do, where to go, expectations? I don't know what a kickoff is. I figured I'd wait and ask, but who should I ask?
Okay. I guess Tammy can get, get that information to you.
Yeah.
It's something that happens annually in our SPS public schools. The next agenda item is plus deltas. If you want to add any remarks and comments, you can put that on a sticker, sticky note and then hand that to Kathy and Tammy. Our next agenda item is to adjourn the meeting. There is no closed session tonight. So the recommended action is that the board meeting adjourn.
So move.
Sharita will make that motion. Is there someone else who would like to second it?
Yeah.
Charles, Charles will second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. That concludes our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you for joining.